Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Krishna Bansal and on behalf of Indian Community Outreach, I welcome you all, taking time off from your busy schedule on Saturday afternoon and be here for a very, very just cause. We need to understand who we are electing. Naperville is a great city. It's the second largest economy and we'll be talking a lot about it. So, welcome, everyone. Before we start, I'd like to call upon Natasha Grover. She's elected, she's a school board member on 204 from Indian Community. I'd like her to come and lead us for the pleasure of elegance.
Thank you, Natasha.
Natasha is a fine example of where ICO, Indian Community Outreach started with the mission of involving people from Indian-American community to participate in the political process, to be part of, when I say political, with the local governments, to help and really make sure that we all are in there, talking about different causes. So, thank you, Natasha. Let's move on to the next. So, a little bit about Indian Community Outreach. This is an organization that was started in 2013, when we had a lot of discussions with Mayor, then Mayor Pradel. Steve was, at that point, he was a councilman and we all sat down and talked about, we need to have an outreach program for the growing Indian community in the city of Naperville. Indian community is the largest minority with over 10% population. Most of them are doctors, engineers, business people, and from different areas and contributing immensely. But, a lot of them are also from first-generation immigrants, so it was a big need to bring them in the system, so that they can come and participate and really help grow and take our city to the next level. We have, I mean, our motto is educate, integrate, and empower. We have worked very hard with that and in last, just a very few years, contributed towards enhancing the culture, commerce, education. We have held multiple, I mean, we hold multiple forums, we do scholarships, and India Day is our signature program that we do every year in August. A lot of you must have heard about it, participated in it, and if not, it's coming on August 11th. So, with that, I'd like to thank, first of all, all the elected officials who are here. I see many of them here, from school board, from Park District, from City Council, and all the candidates who have stepped up for, to participate in the system and to help the city. So, we really thank all of you. And if, all of the elected officials, if you can stand up and be recognized, that'll be, that'll be great. And the candidates as well. Can we see them? Well, I also like to, I mean, of course, when we do something like this, we always like to recognize our sponsors, many of them. I mean, you see, they come and help us every year. We do a lot of different things, work with us. One of our sponsors, North Central College, they have been here participating with us today. So, thank you, our sponsors. Board of Directors of ICO, some people, some of these people who have, who give immense amount of time, many, many hours, every year to work on these causes. Our advisory council, very wide, people from all different parts of Chicago, they come and participate. And, who was in this earlier? And this, our core team and volunteers. I mean, of course, when we put anything like this, we need help and our team steps up. We have a core team that's always standing up there with, to help and make anything happen, what we're looking for here. ICO again, has been recognized very well. Last year, we got Governor's Award for, as one of the best organizations in the state and working with it. Now, we work with business and econ, on the business and economic platforms. We have been instrumental in helping a lot of businesses to come and relocate to Naperville and work, help Naperville's economy. We work with existing businesses to help them if there's any need. We hold the forums with them. We do scholarships, we recognize leaders. We hold multiple forums on civic, social, business, multiple issues, so that we can educate and bring everyone in the mainstream and organize them. Of course, we represent within the community. The whole purpose is so we can bring all communities together and we be one part and grow the city already, which is stated as, stated as the best city, even better. India Day Celebration is our, as I said, is our key event that we do every year and a lot of you help us and participate with us. With that, I would like to, these are some of the organizations. I'd like to kickstart this event. To do that, would like to call Honorable Mayor Steve Chirico to give opening remarks. Steve has been, everyone knows Steve here, I don't have, I mean, he doesn't need any introduction. A businessman, a person who has dedicated his life, many, many years on the boards and commissions, did a lot of big festivals and everything, and then got into City Council, served on City Council, and has been a mayor for last, little, around four years. And Steve has done a tremendous job on helping us instigate a lot of programs that we are working on. So, Steve, I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Krishna. Good afternoon. It's good to see you here today, Saturday afternoon, investing your time to learn more about the candidates for, you know, who's going to lead your town. About, let's see, about two, three, almost three months ago now, our country, federal government shut down for 35 days. Remember? In January through a little bit of February. Who felt it in this room? Did anybody feel it? I see one hand, two hands, three hands. If your local government shuts down for 35 days, I can assure you, you will all feel it immediately. Within a day or two, it will affect your lives in a bad way. Local government is very, very important to our everyday lives and unfortunately, many people don't take the elections seriously enough compared to how much value that they get from their local government. So, the fact that you are here today, investing your time on a Saturday afternoon, to listen to candidates and to try to understand what their positions are, so that we can elect local leaders who are the best for our community and people who do have, do not have particular special interests or axe to grind or some sort of national agenda, it's important that you understand that, so that you elect people who are what's, who are best for our community, for Naperville. And we have a very, very divided country right now. And so, you look on social media and you read about individual candidates and you hear about them, and if that's the way people are going to get their information, that's a problem, because that's not really a good source of information. Spending time, listening, being here today and really listening to these people speak at forums, this is how you get your information, it's the best way to do it, truly the only way to do it. So, I thank you for participating in government. This is what makes Naperville such a great place, is that our community is engaged and we need to remain engaged. So, I thank you for being here today and I look forward to hearing the candidates' remarks. And again, I want to thank the candidates. Everybody, every one of them has to put themselves out there for public judgment. It's not easy, especially again today, such a divisive, politics is very divisive, and so it's not easy. And so, they all deserve to be congratulated and thanked for doing that. So, thank you again. I'm looking forward to the remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I mean, this is a fine example of how, I mean, how good Naperville is, how people participate. We have not, I mean, for four positions, we don't have just four people or five people or six people. We have 11 people participating and that's a great news. Now, we have, these people are so excited to participate. Now, we, it's our chance to pick the best and take our city to the next level. Before I introduce our moderators, I know I swiped through my board and volunteers. I'd like my, the ICO board members who are here to just stand up and be recognized. And the core team, ICO core team that has been helping us, volunteer, please, if you can stand up. Thank you. Thank you all for what you do. It really helps, I mean, when we all get together and we do put together big programs. So, with that, I would like to introduce, I'd like to hand over this evening in very capable hands of two people who will run and moderate this forum. I'd like to introduce, start with Viral Shah. He's a director and treasurer within ICO, a great personality. He did conducted the last forum, actually, both conducted the last forum as well in 2017. So, Viral Shah, and then we have Vandana Jhingan. She's the TV anchor with our ethnic news media channel, TV Asia. It's a national TV channel. She represents them for the Midwest. So, I will, with that, I will hand over the reins to you, Viral, and we can go from there.
Thank you, Krishna. Welcome to the 2019 ICO City Council Candidates Forum. My name is Viral Shah and as a board member and on behalf of the Indian Community Outreach, I welcome the audience and the candidates to this afternoon's forum. For the next two hours, our goal is to understand our candidates who are vying to represent us in the upcoming elections in April. We have a total of 11 candidates who are on the ballot, out of which we have 10 candidates here. I'll start off by introducing each candidate and they'll spend about two minutes introducing themselves, followed by three questions, that they will have a minute and a half each to answer. Two of these questions have been prepared by ICO and provided to the candidates prior to the start of the forum. Everybody got those, right? Perfect. Following the three questions, we will turn to the questions that we have been provided by the audience. Index cards have been given to folks. There are more index cards that Vasili has, that she can circulate around. Please write your questions down, bring them forward. We will have Krishna next to me, who's going to start looking through those questions and we'll aggregate them and ask the council candidates. The pre-screeners, Krishna is a pre-screener. He's going to review the questions. I'll review the questions before we ask them, to make sure that they fit the guidelines. I mean, we don't want crazy questions, right? I think. You'll have about a minute to answer them. Once you have 15 seconds left in either your minute and a half question or the minute question, my friend Gotham here is going to raise the yellow card, letting you know that you have 15 seconds left. And when your time's up, stop. You have zero seconds left. I mean, that's swim team time, right? The sequence in which the candidates will introduce themselves, as well as answer the questions, is random. This will ensure that everyone will have the opportunity to answer the question first, as well as last, and everything in between. At this time, I would like to ask the audience to silence your cellphones. I did hear one Hollywood or Bollywood or some tune ringing at the back, so... So, it's greatly appreciated if you silence your phones. If there are no other questions on the format, let us begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Economic affordability to live in the city of Naperville...
Actually, the introduction, they have to introduce themselves.
We'll start from Nancy.
No, so we're going to...
Sorry.
Sorry. Introductions. We're going to start with Paul Hinterlong.
I'm the lucky one. All right. Thank you, Viral and Vandana, for moderating today and ICO for providing this opportunity for our residents to gain more information on each candidate running. I'm a lifelong resident of Naperville and my family's been here eight generations. I recognize volunteerism that we have here when I was 15 years old. When the community pitched in to build the first segment of the Riverwalk in preparation for our sesquicentennial celebration, it was such a feeling of community that has always resonated with me. At 26, I bought my first house and started giving, getting involved with the city. Before I knew it, I became president of my homeowners association, on the Board of Directors in Naperville Area Homeowners Confederation, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and currently on City Council to serve as liaison for Advisory Commission on Disabilities and to serve on the Board of, for Citizens Appreciate Public Safety, Alive Center, Naperville Healing Field, and a member of the Memorial Day Parade Committee. Naperville's a great place to live and raise a family. However, it's taken a lot of hard work to accomplish what we have here and enjoy here today. I'd like to continue to work towards increasing our economic growth. We must work harder to attract more businesses to Naperville and bolster our economic growth. From our small business to our large corporations, we must find sustainable solutions to cover our adopted principles and increase our reserves and pay down our debt to secure a sustainable future. We must also continue to find solutions to affordable housing, whether you're senior, empty nester, college graduate, or young family trying to live in Naperville or move to Naperville. It's extremely difficult to find cost-effective housing to meet your needs. Mental health, our goal is to have all of our responders crisis intervention trained by 2020. Currently, our fire is fully compliant and our police are about 30%. I'm Paul Hinterlong and I'm the third on the ballot and I'm the only candidate with all four endorsements, the Chamber Knack Pack, Fraternal Order of Police, Professional Firefighters, and the Daily Herald. Thank you for coming out today.
The next one goes to Michelle Clemen.
Good afternoon. Thank you both for moderating today and thank you to ICO for hosting the forum this afternoon. My name is Michelle Hilger-Clemen and I moved to Naperville 15 years ago to help open a senior housing community here. Not knowing much about Naperville, I quickly learned that this community was a very special place and became involved in volunteering with the Naperville J.C.'s, later with the Rotary Club of Naperville, and then was appointed to the Housing Advisory Commission by Mayor Pradel, reappointed by Mayor Cherco, and have chaired the Housing Advisory Commission for the last almost five years. I have a degree from North Central, excuse me, from Grand Valley State University in Health Communications and I earned my master's degree from North Central College. This community is very special to me. From my work with seniors, I'm drawing inspiration from many of them that I've gotten to know over the years. Many of them were visionaries for this community that helped create the vibrant community that we live in today. And I want to take that vision that they worked so hard for, modernize it, and continue to make Naperville a great place to live, work, and play. I'm running for City Council, not only because I love this community, but I think that there's more work to be done. I think we need to continue to focus on our financial stability and responsibly paying down our debt while increasing our reserves. We need to be, continue to be the bright spot in the state of Illinois when it comes to finances. Economic development, I think we need to have a nice mix of both residential and commercial development to help keep our property taxes low. Public safety is very important, not only for congestion and traffic, it's important for our first responders to be able to get where they need to go, as well as a focus on mental health awareness. And lastly, keeping Naperville affordable for those that have lived here their whole lives, but also those that we want to continue to attract to come to our great community. My name is Michelle Hilger-Clemen and I'm number five on the ballot.
Next is Patrick Kelly.
Good afternoon. Thank you to ICO for hosting us and for everyone who's come out to watch the forum this afternoon. My name is Patrick Kelly. I'm running for Naperville City Council, obviously. Just a little bit about myself. I grew up in the western suburbs, primarily in Woodridge. I attended Downers Grove North High School and then attended University of Illinois at Champaign. I went originally for civil engineering and quickly learned that was not going to be for me. So, I switched gears, wound up with an English degree, and then went to law school at Chicago Kent in Chicago and got a certificate along with my J.D. in environmental and energy law. Upon graduating law school, I worked at various governmental levels, both at the municipal, state, and federal level. So, I've got experience at all three levels of the government. And currently, I've got my own law firm here in downtown Naperville, just a few blocks over on Jefferson Avenue, focusing on small business and real estate transactions. My wife and I came here originally in 2010 and we came really because we thought this would be a great place to raise our family one day. We knew it had the schools, the parks, the neighborhoods that we were going to want to raise our children in, and we're in the middle of doing that now. We've got three young children at home that will attend two or three schools over the next many years and we want to make sure that this is going to remain a great place and that this remains the place that people want to move from all over the country to raise their families. A few of the issues that I really care about are, I mentioned my environmental background, so sustainability to me is a major thing for renewable energy sources and making sure that we have a future, forward-thinking outlook on that issue. Development is a major issue. There's major developments happening all throughout Naperville and I want to make sure that residents' voices are heard when those developments are being considered. And fiscal responsibility is also an important thing to me with the young children. I want to make sure that we're making good financial decisions today as a city, so that our children don't pay for that down the road. Thank you.
Nancy Turner, next.
Good afternoon and thank you, everyone, for attending and for watching at home. My name is Nancy Turner and first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived in Naperville for almost 20 years. Like many people here, one of the reasons we moved to Naperville was for the excellent public schools. I have two sons, both in their twenties. My oldest son is an aerospace engineer, working on the manned mission to Mars, and my youngest started his doctorate in music at the U of I this year. So, my husband and I have been very pleased with the educational foundation they received here in Naperville. My background is in education, as a world languages teacher, specifically Latin and English, and also Spanish. I was inspired to run by all the women who stepped up to run for office in 2018, some of whose campaigns I helped. With two women stepping down from City Council this year and with more than half of Naperville's residents being women, I decided it was time to step up. I have three goals if elected to City Council. First, I think one of the most important functions of City Council is to be fiscally responsible, with the public tax dollars for the public goods we expect and receive for them, fire and police, infrastructure, and schools. Barbara O'Meara and I have demonstrated our fiscal responsibility with our campaign by running together. We thought it made fiscal sense for us to share our resources and expenses and we will continue to be fiscally responsible with your tax dollars on City Council as well. Second, Naperville could be a leader in combating climate change, given its size, affluence, and level of education. The greener and more sustainable we make Naperville, the healthier and safer it will be for our children and grandchildren. Finally, I want to be an independent voice on City Council to make thoughtful, informed decisions that benefit all the stakeholders. I don't have any conflicts of interest or ties to any companies doing business with the city of Naperville. Instead, I have ties to my community from my career as a public school educator and my volunteer work with Casa DuPage, being a tutor in a homeless shelter in Chicago and helping out at Loews and Fishes periodically. Thank you, Nancy Turner, number 10 on your ballot.
Next is Patty Guston.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here this afternoon. Thank you to ICO. I love going to all of your events all the time. You always have your door open and welcome to all of us, so I thank you for that and I thank you for doing the forum today. It's important to let the residents know about the individuals who want to give of their time and want to serve on the dais. It's very, very important. I'm going to start a little bit with respect to my personal background. I am Patty Guston. I'm your city, a current City Council woman. I was one of four City Council women that were elected to the dais last election. That's not the reason to vote for me, but I do want you to know that I did start my career at the U.S. Department of Health, Education, and Welfare, and then moving to the U.S. Attorney's Office, Department of Justice, in their Criminal Division. After that, I took a job at FDIC, closing banks and SNLs. At that time, I met my wonderful supportive husband, Greg, and many of you have met him also. We moved to the western suburbs to raise our children, as many families do. I decided on a career of a stay-at-home mom and engaged in community involvement and real estate. I've been a Realtor for over 20 years, so I work and understand the housing needs of our community and what those professional elements are. I also am a graduate from DePaul University with my degree in business and also Roosevelt University's paralegal. Years ago, Lyle Mayor Gallardi, who has now passed, appointed me to the Lyle Planning and Zoning Board, where I heard very controversial cases and that actually gave me a very vicious appetite for community service. There was the Myers case that came before them and it actually went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court for a decision on it. We moved to Naperville after that and Mayor Pradel appointed me to the PZC and for approximately 10 years, and then I became chairwoman for the City Council. We have grown children. My kids all graduated from Naperville North High School. My son Randy is an engineer. My daughter Courtney is an attorney and her engagement party is today. And my daughter Lindsay graduated from Augustin and will be a teacher, hopefully, at Naperville North High School. Thank you.
Next is Teresa Sullivan.
This is better. Thank you. Thank you to the ICO for having, having us today and to every Naperville resident here who's taking time out of your weekend to meet us and to make the best decision you can on April 2nd. My name is Teresa Sullivan and I'm a lifelong Naperville resident and a 1994 Naperville North graduate. This community and the education that I received here set me up for success. I learned, I earned a Bachelor's of Business Administration, an MIS, from the University of Notre Dame, and I hold an MBA and a Master's of Science from Northwestern's Kellogg School of Management. My husband Peter and I have three children in Naperville public schools ranging from elementary school to high school. And the bulk of my career was spent as an IT professional at Deloitte, IBM, and LinkedIn, among others. Those experiences made me good at understanding my clients' business challenges and their financial implications, architecting technology and business solutions to help solve those issues, and negotiating and delivering upon multimillion-dollar contracts, which will help, which will be very germane on council. Five years ago, I won a grant from LinkedIn. I started my own career consulting firm to help talented but burned-out professionals reignite their careers and flourish professionally and personally. I'm humbled to have received the support and endorsement of the Naperville Professional Firefighters as a first-time candidate. I'm running for council because I bring a unique valuable point of view to council. I'm a daughter of Naperville, a business owner, a technologist, a negotiator, a career coach, a mother of three school-aged kids, and that may not be that unique to Naperville, but it is unique on council. I'm excited to play a valuable role in the city's future. If Naperville voters grant me a seat on council, I'll advocate for Naperville's families by championing resident safety, government transparency, sustainable development, and responsible fiscal policy. Thank you. My name is Teresa Sullivan and I love your vote on April 2nd.
Thank you. Next is Whitney Robbins.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us and thank you all for being here today. It's wonderful. Again, I am Whitney Robbins. I am running for City Council, truly because I love Naperville. I grew up in Naperville. I am, with my husband and I, we are raising our three young children, 13, eight, and five, in the same neighborhood that I grew up in, which is called Park Edition. It's actually right in between Ogden Avenue and Fifth Avenue. Everyone talks about the Fifth Avenue development. My home is three doors down from that development. I truly believe that Naperville, as we know, is one of the best communities there is and what I want to do is I want to make sure that that continues as my children grow. I want them to want to come back here. And on, on top of that, I also currently sit on the Naperville Liquor Commission and I truly believe that that has given me a great perspective of balance, safety, and also being open to new ideas as our world changes. I am a full-time working mom. I have 20-plus years in the telecom industry. My role in that is building networks. We hear a lot about the 5G network and that is what I do. I am on the wholesale side of telecom and so when you start to hear about what's happening in these cities, I am a very intimate contributor to that. My focus is public safety. Public safety is one of the most, it is the most important function of government and we can't take that for granted. We have to continue to put that first. The second thing, which is pretty high up there as well, is economic development. I think we have done a phenomenal job of not only progressing in that area, but also putting new thoughts and ideas out there and we're thriving as a result. So, I want to see us retain that small, medium, and large business, but I also want to welcome other businesses and grow. On top of that, I want to meet with our neighbors, our community, to address all of our community needs, whether it's traffic, commuter issues. I am number eight on the ballot. Thank you again, Whitney Robbins.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we've got Bruce Hanson.
Hello, my name is Bruce Hanson. My wife Amanda and I have been here for about 20 years in Naperville. She and I have been married for 28 years. We have freshman twins, Annalise and Nathan, who are at Naperville North High School. When we moved to Naperville, we were welcomed by a volunteer community that taught us just the incredible involvement of our community. And so I applaud the involvement of Krishna Banasal for leading this group here, and for Bill Liu, who's doing similar work for our Chinese commission as well. My background is, I have a Master of Arts in French, Political Science, Economics, and History. It's actually a French Studies degree. And my first job was in the Japan Banking Group at Merrill Lynch, so I can, sure you can see the intersection there. When I was 25, I started my first company on Wall Street, so I understand business, and I understand the value of education. After I started that first company, it became apparent to me that my whole passion around business was making sure that I understand how to do this in an international capacity. I am one who has lived overseas, so I know what it's like to be an expat, although I was a student and I did have a job over there, but it wasn't a career and it wasn't my lifestyle. But I had enough time over there to recognize the value of that. As I got involved in Naperville here, what was fortunate for me was Mayor Prudential appointed me in 2003 to the Financial Advisory Board, and as part of that, I got to sit through eight budget cycles for the city. I served on the Library Board, the Special Events and Cultural Amenities Board, and now, for the last two years, on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I've had 16 years of appointed experience through four mayoral appointments. So at this time, I probably am one of the most experienced candidates up here. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be here in this room. I'm appreciative of the Indian community outreach and for all of you for being here, and I look forward to this forum. My name is Bruce Hanson, number six on the ballot. Please vote for me on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara O'Meara.
Yay. Hi, my name's Barbara O'Meara, and I've been in Naperville for over 20 years. I've raised three children here, two who have graduated from Naperville North, and one who is an eighth grader at Kennedy and would rather me not run for anything and not tell his friends. So we don't go to Kennedy and advertise that I'm running for anything. I have a biology degree and a master's in public health. I have worked for over 30 years in the public health sector in a governmental entity with the state of Illinois. I oversee at this moment, I'm the regional supervisor, I oversee 11 different programs. Anything that has to do with public health, anything that has to do with environmental health comes through my desk. I interpret the laws, I enforce the laws, and I write the legal cases to prosecute people that don't believe in those laws. It's an interesting job. I cover nine counties. I've got plumbers, toxicologists, pesticide inspectors, elevated blood levels for children. There's a lot of things that goes past my desk, and I want to bring that unique perspective of science to the city council. I've worked with CDC. I've worked alongside US EPA. I've investigated deaths along with OSHA. I had the opportunity to do an investigation myself, which led to a $14 million super fund cleanup in the city of Chicago, and had to work there for four months after that happened. I'm running for city council to keep it diverse. As Nancy said earlier, we elected to run together because we wanted to show we were fiscally responsible from the get-go. I think Naperville, you need to thank your mayor and your city council members because it is fiscally sound here in Naperville, and we want to keep it that way. I want to follow up with sustainability, with ecological soundness. I want to know what's happening at these developments. I want to know where runoff is going. I want to know what's happening prior to those things being approved. My name is Barbara O'Meara, and I'm number nine on the ballot.
And next up, we've got Bradford Miller.
Good afternoon. First, thank you to the ICO for hosting the forum, and thank you to everybody in the audience and watching on TV for learning more about the candidates for city council. My name is Bradford Miller, and I'm a first-time candidate for Naperville City Council. I grew up in Berle, Illinois, and graduated from Illinois State University with a bachelor's degree in political science. While I was there, I had the honor of being the first student chosen from Illinois State to attend Oxford University in England. At Oxford, I studied political science and economics. Later, I received a scholarship to attend to John Marshall Law School, where I earned my JD and a master's degree in real estate law. I'm married to my beautiful wife Gina, and we have two wonderful daughters, Audrey and Addison. My family moved to Naperville because it's a great city. We have great schools, great parks, great libraries, great restaurants, et cetera. On the state level, as we all know, things are not going so great. We have a pension and fiscal crisis. Our state's losing population. But here in Naperville, we tell a different story. We have a AAA bond rating. We keep our taxes as low as possible. We keep our spending in check. We are contributing money into our reserves, and our population is actually growing. This didn't happen overnight. It took a lot of hard work at the local level to steer Naperville in the right direction. And I'm running for city council because I want to keep us on the right track. Things are not perfect. We acknowledge there are significant challenges ahead in our community. We have traffic issues. We have big developments on the horizon. We have a growing opioid crisis in our community. But I'm ready to tackle those challenges. I'm ready to fight to keep Naperville the best place to raise a family. 10 years ago, I opened up my own law practice in Chicago. As many of you know, as a small business owner, you have to make hard decisions. You have to balance budgets. You have to plan for the future, and you have to be able to lead. I'm ready to take that skill set to the city council. I will make the hard decisions. I will work to balance our budgets, and I will tackle the challenges facing our community. My name is Bradford Miller. I'm running for city council. I'm number one on the ballot, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your introduction. Just wanted to point out that we are broadcasting this live through NCTV as well as through many Indian channels. The camera is back up there, so we have a pretty wide reach that has actually questions coming in online as well. So that's something that's being tackled here, along with the prepared questions that we have. With that said, we'll move on to our first prepared question.
The first question goes, "Economic affordability to live in the city of Naperville has two ends of the spectrum. One is affordability facilities for the seniors who have lived here most part of their lives. And on the flip side, the younger population is not infusing in the city. The current average age of the population in Naperville is going up. While we have seen initiatives regarding seniors, our younger generation has asked, 'What would you support or bring to the table that will keep the city attractive for younger population, including modernization of the city itself at the same time, continue to be it affordable?'" And goes to, we'll start with Whitney Robbins.
Thank you. So I truly believe this is a very important issue in our community. I truly think that we have to be able to close our eyes and reimagine what different areas throughout our city could be. We have to be able to continue to grow. What's that famous quote? "The only thing that is constant is change. Successful people and businesses must embrace this, or they are left behind." And Naperville is truly at a crossroads here with what we have to offer for younger generations going forward. The younger generations are known to want convenience at a lower cost. Wellness is a daily activity. They currently prefer not to have a whole bunch of ownership, like cars or homes. As they get older, they will settle down and probably want to own a thing or two. They seek experiences. The millennial generation is actually larger than the baby boomer generation, so we need to pay attention to this. They will have a giant impact on our city. Can Naperville change to suit their needs? This target generation wants smaller cities with an urban feel. Naperville has a lot to offer already, with access to transportation, jobs with larger corporations, employees hundreds of small, medium, and medium-range businesses, and great restaurants. But a terrific base to work with, I agree, there is. I am encouraged that Naperville has shown signs to start reimagining what we could be. The Schuman, the Costco, or not Costco, the Sam's Club. I have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Teresa Sullivan.
I am a proponent of making Naperville more affordable for people coming out of school and for younger people who may live alone and have a single income. People are taking longer to get married and to start families while their careers are beginning, and affording housing here is hard, especially if you're not making six figures. We need to make room for the people coming back here that we cherish, the police, fire, the social workers, the teachers, the students, the government employees who are having trouble affording things here. And we can do better by giving them affordable choices in Naperville. As someone who's always been passionate about technology, we should be exploring more smart city technologies that can update our parking and shopping and traffic and public safety. There's just an article in The Sun the other day about a man who has an app helping local shopping. These are the kind of things that we can help get millennials here and stay here, and the kids and my kids' generation. And as far as addressing the needs of younger Naperville residents, I hope that our younger generation will consider coming back to Naperville and offering their intellect and time and passion to make our city better. To take an idea I heard from one of our mayoral candidates, just the same as we have a senior task force, I think we should have a task force made up of 18- to 30-year-olds that can tell us what they want and need out of Naperville, and to listen, to have council listen to that and make it an important part of what we think about.
Just a quick note, it is 90 seconds for the answers. Next up is Nancy Turner.
As the mother of two millennials who graduated from two or three schools, neither one of whom is currently living at home, I asked both of my sons what makes a city attractive to them. One is a scientist and one is a musician, yet they both responded the same way. They want public transportation, which is currently not really a priority here in Naperville, and it's fairly limited. We are a sprawling city, and we drive everywhere. Even for commuters who take the train to Chicago every day, the most convenient and cheapest way of getting to the train station is to hop in your car and pay $2 for a full day of parking. This parking fee has not changed in 20 years. My sons also mentioned wanting a city that's bike-friendly, that has good ethnic restaurants that are not chains, festivals, nightlife, and concerts. Naperville has a lot of this already, but it is mostly geared toward families. What is economically possible for millennials in Naperville is not appealing to them. They don't want the sprawling suburban lifestyle that we have here. Naperville is a great choice for families that move here, for our public schools, but not if you're single and looking for social opportunities. And the senior population in Naperville is already greater than 25%. If we want millennials, which we should, so we don't become a predominantly senior community, then we need to engage in city planning that intentionally plans for them, gives them things that millennials want, such as walkable districts, easy access to biking, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Hinterla.
Whether you're a senior, empty nester, college grad, or a young family trying to stay in Naperville or move to Naperville, it's extremely hard to find something that's both affordable and cost-effective to meet your needs. It's imperative that we continue to concentrate on finding solution in our ordinances and zoning codes that will give us more opportunities for diverse housing stock that will meet the needs of these individuals. We have opportunities, as the owners of the property at Fifth Avenue, an area to find some solutions to our affordable housing. I look forward to the discussions about housing alternatives for all ages within the development, and will push to have those discussions. I think we could do, I think we could have some very positive results in regards to meeting our obligations in affordable housing. However, as Naperville approaches build-out, our opportunities will be harder to bring to reality the fact that nobody wants apartments in their back yards with few parcels of land It only demonstrates the need to have affordable housing discussions within the property we control. At 7.5% of our housing stock being affordable, we have to do better and reach our 10% goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Barbara O'Meara.
You know, a lot of communities would like to have the problems that Naperville has because we've got a vibrant community here. And my son, who is now 22, went back to New York City. He terms Naperville the Naperville Bubble because it is. It's a safe community. It's a great community for kids to go to school here and to grow up in, and that's what we want to keep. It's a little hard when you look at Naperville as a bubble and say, "Oh, I want to come right back here when I'm 23." No, it's not what they want. What millennials want is to work for the web-based, the internet companies. They want that type of job. They want places where they can bike. They want things to do outside. Naperville offers a lot of things to do outside. What we need to do is form a more incubation-type business so that we can get millennials to come back here, so that we can support them in their endeavors and have them start their businesses. And yes, they need places to live that are affordable. And places that are affordable are not necessarily going to be our four-bedroom homes that a lot of us own. A lot of children come back to their hometown after they marry, after they want to have children. What we need to do is develop things to bring the 20-somethings back. And I think that we've got the ability to do that here in Naperville, and we've got to look at ways to do that. And I think web-based industry, incubating new businesses for their ages, and trying to find affordable housing is part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Kelly.
Thank you. So this is a very personal question to me right at this particular moment because my in-laws live in St. Charles, and we've got the three little ones at home, and they would love to be closer, and we would love to have them much closer, right down the block if we could. And they've got two problems. One is they would really love to have a ranch here in Naperville that would be somewhat affordable, and they're having a really hard time finding that. The other problem they're having is leaving St. Charles. They're in a large house on a golf course that you can't walk to anything. There's no nearby amenities, and no young people want to buy that house. They figured, "Oh, this won't be so bad. One day, we'll find a family that'll buy it, and we'll be out of here." They had one house in Naperville about six months ago that they thought they could have come to, but they could not sell that house in St. Charles. And I don't want to see that same thing happen in Naperville. I think it's something we need to be very cognizant of, especially as we go forward with some of these larger-scale developments, especially in South Naperville. And we want to make sure these developments are vibrant, that they're not only residential. Commercial and retail is difficult, but we've got to find a way to make these communities and neighborhoods vibrant with parks, amenities, so that people want to live there and that people my age and younger than me want to continue moving to them. I think we've got to think about big-picture issues like connectivity. People want to walk. People want to bike. People do not want to drive anywhere. That was a major thing for us when we moved to Naperville, that we could walk and bike. An issue I've been concerned about is how children get to school. In my neighborhood, you've got to cross very busy roads, and we've got to make sure we keep that in mind to make sure kids can get where they got to go safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Patty Guston.
Thank you very much. I'm actually the only one on the dais here that actually is in the profession of real estate, as a real estate broker for the last 20 years, and a senior real estate specialist. I understand the needs and concerns of our seniors. The city of Naperville has actually done a really good job with respect to senior housing, with respect to multi-unit senior housing. We have approved a lot of over 55 developments in the community. South Naperville, down by Carolan, we've got developments going in. Up in Attwater, there's ranches, two-story ranches. There's over 55 friendly inventory available for people who want to transition to Naperville. Our senior base is a good base. However, I will say, with respect to the young people moving to Naperville, many of the young people that want to move to Naperville, they move when they are going to have children. And it is because of our school systems. And I actually got the endorsement of the COD chairman, Frank Napolitano, just recently. I got his endorsement because he realizes that education is a very intricate part of any community, and we have a great educational system here. That is why a lot of young people, when they're starting to have a family, will come and move to Naperville. Traditionally, they don't move to move into an apartment, but that happens sometimes, too. That may be something that they can attain. In our industry, there is a difference between affordable housing, which is more federally subsidized housing, and attainable housing, which is in between market price and affordable pricing. So I'm just the only one up here that understands the industry as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brad Miller.
Thank you. Naperville has a lot to offer younger people, but obviously, there's a lot more work to do. There's no doubt that living in Naperville can be expensive. Naperville is one of 46 municipalities that has to submit a plan by June of 2020 to address the shortage of affordable housing. And, excuse me, in that plan, we're going to have to lay out specific proposals. lay out specific proposals and incentives to create affordable housing, not only for seniors, but also younger people and younger families, as you mentioned. Younger people have a lot to bring to Naperville. They're energetic, ambitious, and creative. We want them here in our city. When it comes to where they want to live, I think that a lot of them are going to want to live near restaurants and other forms of commerce, if possible. So when we are developing our affordable housing plan, we will need to think about that as well. A lot of them will also possibly have to take the train into the city, so improving our train station and the parking around the train station should also be a priority. And obviously, younger people will need jobs. So as a city, we need to continue to attract businesses of all kinds, especially in the technology fields and other emerging areas, so that younger people not only move to Naperville but stay in Naperville. We need to have a business-friendly environment to encourage younger people to start new businesses and invest here in Naperville. And finally, we need to make sure our schools stay top-notch to attract younger families to our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bruce Hanson.
Thank you. A key to any strong and vibrant local economy is diversity. So diversity in our population, our housing options, and in our city's revenue streams. We have to have strong mixes of each. Diversification in sources of revenue mitigates risk during an economic downturn, and similarly, we need intentional development of housing options that give us complementary shopping and entertainment options to attract and retain people in those areas. Both the younger population and our seniors or empty nesters could thrive together at the Fifth Avenue Development, for example, by creating residential options that each can afford. For younger people who commute to Chicago, this unique opportunity is one more way in which Naperville can retain its status as a world-class city. Naperville itself owns 14 acres of primarily surface parking right now, and this property could become a mix of housing options, something for nearly everyone, from young to senior, with outstanding options for dining, retail, recreation, education, healthcare facilities, all within walking distance of each other. There's the additional benefit for young people, being able to commute on the train right from where they live without having to drive or park at a train station. This is an incredible draw. And finally, we do. We have a senior task force. There's one of the representatives sitting right here right now who helps shape input from that population as they interface with city council. So I would enjoy seeing the formation of a task force made up of younger population that could help do the same.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Clement.
Thank you. Young people across the country are reacting to the absence of sufficient affordable housing in or near city centers to meet their demand, which is why many of them are leaving larger cities like Chicago and seeking a more urban environment in the suburbs. One of the ways this is being addressed here in Naperville is with the development of the Fifth Avenue train station. This will allow young people to have access to the train to commute to the city while offering them a more affordable place to live. I'm proud of the work that the city's Housing Advisory Commission has done to make a recommendation to city council for this particular development to include a minimum of 20% affordable housing units, which would mean, according to the Illinois Department of Housing Authority, 30% of the average median income of the metropolitan Chicago area. So that would mean for a single person to purchase a home, the price would be around $130,000 and to rent about $950 per month. Naperville offers young people a distinct quality of place with its vibrant downtown, which includes many restaurants, shopping throughout the community, and experiences, as well as a reputation of a great place to live that is safe. And now are focusing on unique working areas, such as the outdoor park right outside this building. We need to continue to try and engage our local talent by encouraging our young people to become involved in our local economy. The Chamber of Commerce has done a great job with the Young Professionals Network and the Legacy Circle, which is a mentorship program. We also need to look to involve the anchors of our community, such as Edward Hospital and North Central College.
Thank you. We'll move on to our second question. Naperville, over the past 20 years, has become more and more diverse. Current diversity is at about 25%, with Indian-Americans numbered at about 10% of the population and be the largest minority. Most of the population is highly educated and successful business owners and contribute immensely towards the economy of Naperville. The young students of Indian descent that live in the city of Naperville are very driven to be successful. Since 2013, ICO has contributed to educate, integrate, and empower all citizens via education, cultural exchange, and promoting economic interests of Naperville. Is cultural diversity important to you? And if elected to city council, what would you do to further engage such a diverse population for the betterment of the city? The first question, I mean, the question first goes to Bruce Hanson.
Thank you. Well, I'm fortunate in that I had a head start in this category. As a young person and student, I lived, worked, and studied abroad, learning about other cultures and languages. I have a master's degree in French Studies, which I mentioned before, is French Foreign Policy, Economics, and History from New York University. I studied at the Sorbonne as an undergraduate, and I was one of the very few American members of the International Club at my U.S. undergraduate school. So I'm drawn to diversity. We're fortunate to live in a city that so openly welcomes a broad and diverse population, one that makes it so comfortable for people to want to live here, so that we have that 25% population, which is non-white. And I applaud the effort by the mayor, who has intentionally appointed a representative base on the commissions as well, and I believe it has to continue, and I know that he'll do that. And I've served for four years on the CECA Commission, which provides a broad base of cultural options for our residents. And I see this as a great resource that exposes all of our residents and all the visitors to Naperville to an ever-increasing mix of cultural experiences. The Naperville Public Library, the Naperville Settlement, also both offer outstanding options and programming as well that celebrate the tapestry of Naperville. And I know we have community outreach teams. You're one of them, and I already mentioned Bo Lu for the Chinese Community Outreach. These teams are extremely important for connecting the communities in Naperville. Naperville has a rich history and culture itself, but as we grow, there are many groups also with impressive history and heritage that should be shared and celebrated to continue making Naperville a strong community.
Thank you. Patrick Kelly.
Thank you. You know, I agree that diversity on boards and commissions at the city level is really important, and there's been discussion at prior forums about that leading to a pipeline to run for public office, which is important. I think as a young person who's been really involved in the community since I've moved here, it's also important to me to start that at even a lower level. So from the time I moved here, I've been involved with a number of nonprofits and charitable organizations, from the J.C.'s to the New Page Children's Museum, the West Suburban Irish, which we have our own cultural amenities we bring to the table and to the city. And to me, those also feed as a pipeline to that next level, to get on boards and commissions, and to meet people in town, and to have experiences in town that are going to lead to those larger roles one day. So I think it's really important for the city and those organizations to have outreach to young people, for people who are in their 20s, like I was when I started participating on some of those groups, to make sure that the Chamber Young Professionals reach out, which I've done. I've been on the advisory board for the Chambers YPN group for the past couple of years, and we've really made an effort to engage the Indian and Chinese community and bring more members into the YPN Young Board. We've done that at the Children's Museum and the J.C.'s also, which I think will just benefit the whole city overall. CECA, I do think, is also an important thing. We've got to make sure that CECA fulfills the premise that it was created for, and that it really does enhance cultural amenities in the city, and that different things like the India Day Parade, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, things of that nature, get their funding, and it's not just the larger events that swipe up the majority of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Teresa Sullivan.
Thank you. First of all, as I said before, I grew up in Naperville, so I've never been far from home. There are so many people in this room who left their hometowns and their home country to live and settle in Naperville. The courage, the hard work, and the intelligence that it took to get from there to here is astounding. I want to thank you for bringing your talents to Naperville and for choosing Naperville to raise your families in. This city is better for having you here. While the population of Naperville may have just 10% of Indian-Americans, where my kids go to school at B.B. Elementary, at Jefferson Junior High, and at Naperville North, thankfully, that concentration is higher. And through their Indian-American friends, they've participated in India Day. They know what Diwali is. They learned about Hindu gods and goddesses. And many of them also set such a high bar of achievement for our kids, which I know that by example, you know, all of our kids learn from and do better for in school. So thanks to the Indian community for reaching out and for educating those of us who have never visited India and could learn so much from your lives and from your journeys here. Whether or not I'm elected to council, if we just look around at the people in this room, I hope that in two years there's somebody up on this dais talking about this, maybe more people, to be leaders of Naperville, because we need that and it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Guston.
Thank you. I actually, I'm in a very blended family. My brother-in-law is Fazil Khan. I think I might be related to Moon Khan. Is he here today? Not sure. We have a very diverse family. We have Black, Hispanic, British, Argentinian, German. It is just a wonderful blend of our family, and those are the things that I bring to the dais, which is a valuable thing. My niece is actually in China right now. She's been there for two years teaching English. So we are very diverse, and we believe in education and diversity. I would love to see a task force or advisory board with respect to the focus on diversity and how we can better get many cultures engaged in community activities. You know, ICO has been around for a while now. Mayor Pradel started. I remember the first meeting. I participated in that. And it's taken time to evolve. So I think we can do that moving forward with other ethnic groups also in the community and learn and provide education. I also sit on the Sister Cities Commission, and the Sister Cities Commission is a commission authorized by the city of Naperville. Currently, our sister city is with Nitra, Slovakia, and Pasquale, Mexico. However, Vasavi is on it. Shafik is on that commission. It is building to be such a wonderfully diverse commission, and I think we can move those things forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Hintalong.
In my 10 years on the city council, I've witnessed a lot of change in the face of Naperville. I see more and more diversity around the city, and it's been increasing every year. Back in 2013, Mayor Pradel and then Councilman Steve Cherico, which is now our mayor, and myself recognized the changing population and worked to form the Indian community outreach and the Chinese community outreach. All that time, we worked to get more diversity on our boards and commissions, both at the adult and young adult levels as high school liaisons. I feel strongly that the face of Naperville needs to be reflected in all our boards and commissions, and Mayor Cherico has continued to make that a priority through his leadership. As a board member of the Alive Center, we made it a priority to have the diversity that Naperville has and feel strongly that we needed to be all-inclusive in our board and our student board as well. As a city councilman, I have always supported cultural events and programs through our special events and cultural amenities CECA program and look forward to the Indian Community Outreach Parade every year. It's fascinating to see how it has grown year after year and the excitement of the people in attendance. I look forward to it every year. I support people of all colors, and it's my mission to continue pursuing opportunities that can engage all of us in the community to continue to make Naperville the best place to live and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Barbara Mera.
In 2018, we had an election, and we had more women run for elected office in that election than we have in any election in this nation's history. And why did that happen? Because the women wanted a seat at the table, and they didn't want to be told how to do it or why any longer. And diversity starts with putting yourself out there and trying to be represented. And diversity needs to be communicated. And something that I pledge to do, if elected to city council, is to interact with the groups, ask their needs, ask their wants, ask their fears. Where do you want to go? Where do you see yourself? What can the community at this level do for you? And in that conversation, we have to look into the Indian community and say, "Look at yourselves." It's hard to get somebody to run for office. Everyone up here has spent a lot of time, a lot of money, but you know what? Each and every one of us has a chance to have a seat at this table, and that's what we need to do. We need more diversity up here on city council, because I look up and down here, and I see a lot of white privilege sitting up here, including myself. So get out there, communicate to yourselves, talk to one another, support one another financially, end with time, and encourage someone to make that leap and run for city council, run for school board, run for the Park District. And put yourself out there, and I'll help you and I'll support you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michelle Clement.
Thank you. A quote taken right from the Indian Community Outreach website from Mayor Pradel says, "It's so important to make sure all of our cultures are connected within Naperville and that we embrace our unique backgrounds and use them to make Naperville the wonderful city it is. I believe that the city of Naperville has been fortunate to have an ongoing commitment to embracing and promoting our diversity and inclusion. This is evident in the mayor's efforts to appoint a more diverse group of people to the city's boards and commissions. We need to continue to strive to have our city's government look more like its population. At its best, this creates a welcoming and diverse environment and allows people to see their differences and similarities and be better able to relate to one another. With the possibility of a diversity council coming soon through the city, this will hopefully help our community better understand one another, our cultures, and our experiences, and create opportunities for those in our community to feel more connected."
Thank you. Next is Whitney Robbins.
Thank you. I am amazed at the different cultures that have integrated into Naperville. You see restaurants and shops opening up on the north side and the south side. I look forward to seeing the completion of the Mall of India. Naperville hosted the Fourth Indian Day Festival Parade last August to increasing crowds each year. I know what Diwali is. My kids do. I had no idea what that festival was all about. Now I do. That is quite a testament to the work in the education of the Indian community and what we have done in Naperville. Your contribution to cultural diversity is making our city important. This matters. I believe the cultural outreach program started by Mayor Pradel in 2013 is the city's best bridge to minority communities looking to get involved. This is a great start for multicultural engagement. There's also availability on positions on boards and commissions. I think today, we have a very diverse group on both of those. I'm sorry. The chance to give back to those who need it most will only be enriched with new voices and perspectives at the table. It will be Naperville's diversity and inclusion that helps to grow Naperville's economic development. Patel Brothers and H Mart are obvious outgrowths of Naperville's success in endeavoring to reach minority communities. A thriving local economy is the key to prosperity for all of our families, and Naperville won't grow without diverse contributions and new business creations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brad Miller.
Thank you. Cultural diversity is definitely important to me. Naperville has an exciting future, and there's no doubt that the Indian-American community and others from diverse backgrounds contributed towards Naperville being a success story. I think diversity brings new ideas and a new energy to Naperville, and I am definitely supportive of that. I'm excited to see new businesses opening up, such as the Patel Brothers Grocery Store and others that serve our diverse population. Over the past several years, I've seen my subdivision become more diverse. Our block parties are becoming diverse, and kids from different backgrounds can be seen playing soccer and other games outside. I believe Naperville is and will continue to be a welcoming city, despite recent comments to the contrary. To further engage our diverse population, I think we need to be proactive as a city council in learning what needs may exist for certain groups and how best to address them. We can and should encourage more communication and an open dialogue to learn more about each other. We also need to encourage involvement, whether it's through serving in a local organization or on a city board or commission. I think with more communication and more involvement, we will further engage with our diverse population, and then we will realize everything we have in common. We all essentially want the same thing. We want a strong, thriving, safe city to raise our families in. I'm excited for the future in Naperville, and I look forward to working with our diverse population to make it better.
Thank you. Next up is Nancy Turner.
Cultural diversity is very important to me. I have spent my entire academic career teaching and studying foreign languages, civilizations, and cultures, as well as traveling extensively for professional and personal reasons. I started as a classics major, studying Latin and Ancient Greek, along with Italian, and at a later point, I became certified in Spanish. I believe that when I believe that one of the most important things we can teach our children is to understand the perspectives and practices of other cultures and in this way to develop tolerance and respect for others. Now, I was born and raised in Oak Park, which today is a model nationwide for racial integration. Residents today choose Oak Park not only for its schools, rich history and its proximity to the city, but also for its commitment to equality for all. It wasn't always a model for being an inclusive community. So, how did Oak Park grow from a predominantly Caucasian suburb to a community that is committed to equal access, to being a free, open and inclusive community with equality of opportunity in all policies? Oak Park has worked intentionally toward that goal for over 50 years. In the 1960s, Oak Park was first faced with a challenge of racial integration. The village decided to embrace change while respecting and preserving the best of the past. Naperville has started to recognize its diversity through appointments to various boards and commissions and the city government is starting to resemble its residents more. For Naperville to embrace its diversity more fully so that it can become a way of life here, we can start by making it a goal in every aspect of city life.
Thank you. So, at this point, we are running about 12 minutes behind. So, what I'm going to do for, I had initially said that the three questions would be 90 seconds. I'm going to reduce the third question to 60 seconds, just like the rest of them. So, here we go with the question. Our schools help make Naperville as the best city in the country. There's an increasing issue with drugs in our communities, especially with the high schools. We understand that there are continuous efforts to fight with this problem, but clearly there are not enough. What are the ways and means for the city to control, deter this from becoming a larger epidemic? And the first to answer would be Teresa Sullivan.
Thank you. This is, the drug problem is a very important thing for me especially and a lot of the people here who are, whose kids are in the schools right now. And of course, it's for everybody. Our police already are looking at, are treating drug offenses not as, you know, criminalizing the drug when people are caught with drugs and instead getting them help. And I think that that, especially in our schools, that we have to teach our children about what all of the different types of drugs are and how to stay away from them. But we also need in our policing to help those who get addicted to these. A lot of this opioid crisis started with prescription drugs that were given for real purposes by dentists or, you know, for sports injuries. And it became, it became something much worse. So, I think we need to treat those people with compassion and make sure that our kids know that slippery slope and educate everybody on that issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Brad Miller.
So, this is obviously a growing concern in our community. Fentanyl-related deaths are up over 70% in our area. People are dying every year because of overdoses from all types of different drugs. And obviously, our children are our future and we need to have more education in the schools. We need to have, work with the already existing task force that I know was recently established in DuPage County to figure out better ways to address these issues. And we need to look at restricting some of these drugs. Like Teresa said, there is prescriptions out there that I think are probably being abused and I think we need to look at restricting access to those drugs. And I think we also need to make sure our law enforcement has, when they're responding to these types of emergencies, overdoses, they need to make sure they have the drugs to combat that overdose and they have to have the right training to deal with somebody that's dealing with an overdose. But educating our children through our schools about this issue is key.
Thank you. Next is Paul Hintalong.
Thank you. Yes, I think education at home and in our schools is important. The city is taking a proactive approach at our opioid problem. We have a program, Connect for Life, that's for individuals that might be suffering from addiction to turn themselves in or turn in whatever drugs they have, no questions asked, and we get them treatment. We don't prosecute them, we get them the help that they need. It's a continuously growing problem in our region. Opioid overdoses is up 13% and overdoses to fentanyl is up 76% in the last year. So, we have to continue to monitor what's going on. We've got to get those percentages down. We've got to get these children help and we need to educate them on their opportunities that they can have for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Whitney Robbins.
Yes, so again, public safety, keeping that number one, education and communication. I can't say those three enough. I do think our first responders have some phenomenal programs. Having the drop boxes where you can drop off at any one of those fire stations or police stations is huge. I think educating our families, our kids, sitting on the Naperville Liquor Commission, I think gives me a different perspective. It's something we talk about all the time, especially with the marijuana possibly being legalized. That's something that we all as a community are going to have to get our arms around. We've never had that. So, again, public safety, communication, education.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Turner.
Education is important, not only for the schools to be working with the students and the teachers, but also for the schools to be working with the police and the public safety efforts to combat this problem. It's important that public safety officials work with the educators because the educators are often the ones who see the students at a point where they might end up turning to drugs. There are various reasons for students to go down that path and one reason is, you know, an over-prescription of, an over-prescribing of prescription drugs. But another reason is the social pressures that students face constantly when they're in school to be part of a social group. So, education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Clement.
Thank you. I think much has been said already by those of us on the dais this afternoon, with the city already focusing on this with our Connect for Life program at the police department as well as the drop boxes at all of the fire stations and the police department as well. I think we do need to focus on education and that starts at home, but then also with our school resource officers in all of the schools, getting to know those kids that might be at risk and focusing on trying to help them, focusing on mental health awareness and that, that's really where this starts. We need to work with other resources within our community to get our young people involved so that they aren't turning to these prescription drugs or other drugs throughout their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Mira.
I will also reiterate what Whitney and Michelle had to say about those fire department drop-off boxes. I think those are brilliant and it's a way to keep prescription drugs out of the homes. Part of the thing that we need to realize is, a lot of you, a lot of us, hold on to those prescription drugs. You know, you have a procedure, for goodness sakes, you get 30 pills. What do you need those for? So, you keep them. Then your children find them. Those drop boxes come in huge. My oldest came home from Kennedy when he was in seventh grade and he said, "I need to talk to you, Mom." And I said, "Okay, what's going on?" Some kid wanted me to smoke something with him at the football game. I said, "Drugs?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "In seventh grade, here at Kennedy." So, it's a communications thing where you want your children to be able to talk to you. It's an education thing, not only at the schools, but with the kids in the home. Thank you.
Patrick Kelly, next.
So, the most common word we've heard is education and I think that is right. That's, that is the key, but it's not only for the children in the schools. I think a lot of that is for the parents, knowing what to look for and what the potential problems are. You know, my oldest is just about to turn five and he's just in preschool. And already in preschool, some of the things we didn't know that we're finding, you know, that different families are going through and what kids face, even at that young of age. My wife and I sit at home and we're, "Oh, my God, you know, we didn't know about these things." And so, I think that it's really important for parents who are so busy with a lot of homes where both parents work and people are on their phones, people are on social media all the time, to make sure that they're really engaged, knowing what to look for, knowing those warning signs, I think is critical so that we see those things at home. In terms of education and outreach to young people, I think how we reach them is really important. You know, the city does a great job with the drop boxes, but we need to make sure people know about them. And we've got a good presence on Facebook, a little bit on Twitter. If we really want to reach young people, we've got to think about Instagram, Snapchat, other things. We've got to reach people where they are.
Thank you. Next is Patty Guston.
Thank you. We need to be proactive in this. We cannot rely on being reactive when something occurs. And the city has been proactive in a lot of things moving forward. We, as Paula said, we trained our police with the respect to connect to life, which is very important. We also supplied Narcan to our force to make sure that they have the tools available. They've also received training on to deal with people with mental illness and how to meet with them when they pull them over on the street and how to interact with them versus what they believe they should be doing. I will say, I did get the endorsement of the professional firefighters here in Naperville. We in the city council, we actually passed a T-21 bill, which was a tobacco bill with respect to, no one over at the age of 21 could buy tobacco paraphernalia or products. Nowadays, kids are using a lot of those USBs for other things versus nicotine and those are things that are gateways to other type of drug use. We have a high, high death rate in DuPage County with respect to drugs. So, I actually sit on the Kids Matter and Parent Advisory Board, which is a proactive organization, helping children make better choices and that's the educational process. So, we need to be proactive, particularly with the recreational marijuana potentially coming to the state, how we would deal with that financially, emotionally and physically. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Hansen?
I'm going to be a strong advocate for mental health awareness and public safety for all of us, for our children, for all residents and for our first responders. You know, I lost my closest relative and best friend to death by suicide and that's what prompted me to want to create a mental health awareness ministry in our church to address some of the stresses that are hitting all of us, children all the way through to adults. We then connected all of the faith institutions together, brought them here in this room and introduced them to the city's Crisis Intervention Team, which is, was an initiative of the Naperville Police Department. The idea again is to communicate and reduce stress, but also to make sure that resources are known and made available to everyone. So, if I'm elected to city council, I will work with that to make sure that we're working with our schools, all of the great social services agencies that provide that level of support. And we have, like I said, two great school districts that are already taking a great deal of action in this. But I've done it. I mean, I've worked on it and I know that we can do more. We lead in public safety, we're going to lead in mental health awareness as well.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to the questions that we've gotten from the audience. What is your take on the impact of proposed Route 59 corridor development and potential for TIFs? If elected, would you be in favor of, or not, of Naperville granting TIFs to compete with grants that are neighbors, that are given by our neighboring cities? The first question will go to Nancy Turner.
No, I am not in favor of TIFs. I believe that TIFs are a race to the bottom. They divert money from our schools, from our roads, from other public services. I am not in favor of them. As far as a TIF war goes, there are some suburbs, such as I think Hoffman Estates is one, maybe Schaumburg, other suburbs that have large malls, or what used to be malls that are now mostly defunct, that have, I think, modified their TIFs so that any housing that is built, developed on the, on the property where the mall was, that would be exempt from a TIF. So, that housing units that are developed in this area that will be sending more schools to the students will not be, will be exempt from the TIF and they'll still be contributing property tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Mira?
I am not in favor of TIFs, but when you have a town that is bordering yours and they're talking about TIFs, it becomes a real struggle because you just cross across 59 and you're getting a tax break. I know the school board at 204 was addressing this in their meeting because they feel it's going to impact the school. And that's something that we need to consider whenever we're considering a TIF. I don't want a TIF in Naperville. I don't think that they're a good idea. I don't think that long-term, it's good for the schools. I think the schools are what we should all be centering on. That's why Naperville's the best community, you know, right now is because of our schools. It's a great thing to have out there. So, we have to make sure that we're financially supporting them and we need to know that the schools understand that we're going to stick behind them. It's an important thing. So, I'm against the TIFs.
Bruce Hansen?
TIFs are, I'm just not, I'm not a fan of tax increment financing. I think, especially if you look at a city like Naperville, we have so much to offer. There's so many reasons for businesses to be drawn here. I will fight as hard as I can and be as much of a vocal opponent to what is being discussed on the west side of Route 59 as possible because the impact to District 204 residents primarily would be substantial and potentially catastrophic. Because all of the burden of that tax that's currently being paid right now is going to become pushed into and the burden of the rest of the residents of District 204. To use it as a vehicle for some municipal development is okay, but it needs to be very, very carefully vetted and it needs to be inclusive of everybody in the city. And one example of that is the parking deck right over here by the Water Street Development. So, there are occasional, case-by-case basis where it may make sense, but it isn't something that I would advocate for and it is something that it would take a lot of convincing for me to participate in.
Thank you. Michelle Clement?
Thank you. I am not in favor of any sort of TIF development. It takes away from our schools. Our schools become the biggest losers in all of this. And then subsequently, the property owners, who the cost is shifted to, become losers in this as well. And your taxes will increase and your home value will decrease at that point. So, I don't think that TIFs are something that we should be looking at, especially in our community where Naperville is desired to work and live and do business in. This is a cost shift by the city of Aurora to the residents of Naperville to have this development grow through. We do have a TIF. It is mostly in a commercial district, not in a residential area. And I applaud the city council at the time for looking into that. They had the agreement of the school district at that time when the TIF was created.
Thank you. Next is Whitney Robbins.
I will echo what everyone else up here has said. I am not in favor of TIFs. I think the most important thing that we can do as a community is stay very involved with the neighboring community that is talking about this. I think we have to show up to every meeting. We have to be very vocal and we need to figure out how to partner with that community because of all of the things that have been outlined already, whether it's the impact to our community, our schools, everything. So, again, no, I am not in favor.
Thank you. Paul Hintalong?
Thank you. No, I am not in favor of a TIF. It will do no good for the residents of 204. It'll just be a tax burden. It'll shift the tax burden onto them. And there's more 204 students in the 204 district than all of the students in 203. It's a very large sum of Naperville residents that are going to have to feel the tax burden that actually was put in place by the Outlet Mall. Aurora designed or developed the Outlet Mall and it really pretty much put Fox Valley Mall out of business. And now, they're going to take it upon our residents to pay the bill. And I don't think that's right. I think they have to come up with some more ideas and I will continue to address that situation along with the 204. along with the 204 board to fight the best we can to prevent this from happening. We don't want to get into a TIF war with our fellow neighbor communities. So I will be against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Miller?
I agree with my fellow candidate's statement so far. I mean, generally speaking, I'm against TIFs. I think they should be seldom used, and they should only be used as an absolute last resort to spur development. With respect to the Route 59 TIF, definitely against that. You know, it's going to severely impact South Naperville residents, which is where I live. You know, the property taxes for South Naperville will have to go higher to fund the schools. And I think we, as a city, need to stand united against that TIF. It's definitely not in our favor.
Thank you. Teresha Sullivan?
Since I've heard all of my fellow candidates answer this question several times, that we all have the same thing to say about it, I would, so I'll make mine quick. No TIF. I stand absolutely with our District 204. And what we need to do for District 204 in, you know, with, first of all, fighting this with Aurora, but we also need to find out different ways to help them with more taxes that can go into the schools. So I think, you know, there's the preventative, what Aurora is doing, but I also think that we, as a city and as a council, have to come up with some good ideas for giving them more, giving them more property taxpayers to help their schools.
All right. Patrick Kelly?
Yes, I think collaboration is key. So the easy answer for all of us is no. I'm not, I think none of us are in favor of TIF. I am not in favor of TIF in this Aurora 59 area, particularly because you're talking about having a significant portion of it be residential. If it was commercial and didn't generate students, I still wouldn't love it, but that would be another question. If they're going to add a lot of students and not pay for those students, it's a huge problem. But if we, as a city council, stand up and say, "We don't want you to do that, Aurora," and they say, "Yes," we don't have a vote on that. They're going to vote. They're Aurora City Council. They'll decide. We've got to be able to come to the table and work with them to try to figure out a reasonable and creative solution to avoid it, so it doesn't actually happen. In terms of the second part of the question, what to do in Naperville, I would not be in favor of a competing TIF on the east side of Route 59. To me, the answer to bad policy is not more bad policy, and I would not want to compound the problem that they might cause in the first place.
Thank you. Patty. Patty Guston?
Thank you. I am actually one of two residents, I think Bradford, you live in District 204, correct? So it's really going to hit our pocketbooks if this happens. So I'm very passionate about it. I am not a big supporter of TIFs. I know that Water Street was done in a TIF, and it worked out really well, but sometimes they don't always work out. I will say that I did talk to the superintendent, Superintendent Sullivan, for 204. They obviously oppose it. Some of their concerns is capacity. They do have student capacity south of 75th Street, but they don't have capacity north of 75th Street. So if, in fact, that goes in, that's going to affect their budget. Along with the fact that Naperville does have an area on the north side of the city and the south side of the city to expand. And that's within our city limits. So it's important that we really keep an eye on this and make sure that we do the best that we can do for Naperville with respect to it. I don't support TIFs, although Water Street did work out well. I am pro-business, so you really need to take a look at what benefit it's going to do for the community. In this situation, it won't benefit the city of Naperville or our residents.
Thank you. Moving on to the fifth question of our, of the afternoon. This is, I haven't fully read it, but it sounds like it might be a two-part question. So I'm just going to read it out. Many companies are moving to Chicago and other areas, like companies like BP, ConAgra, Office Depot, et cetera. What can be done to stop this exodus and diverse the exit? And we have seen Naperville getting more residential projects than commercial. Commercial development helps ease financial stress from residents and school districts. What steps initiatives would you bring on to, or bring to the table to attract businesses, get more commercial development in Naperville? And we will start that question off with Patty Guston.
Well, I think we have to be creative with respect to how we bring and retain commercial in the area. Commercial is different nowadays. Before, it was strip malls. Before, it was big box stores. That is the way of the past. In the future, we need to be able to identify how we can, how we can move in and have a blended type of development that has not only retail, but actually has residential, potentially maybe even up on Ogden Avenue. If you have some type of retail base and then have residential above it to support that retail base, that might be something. We have to think out of the box. BP and some of the other companies that went to Chicago, they went because they were offered big money to be able to go there. So they had some incentives, and for big businesses, that is the way in which they do it. Naperville is a very desirable place to be. We are modifying the way in which some of our bigger uses up on Deal Road were used. So a lot more e-internet type of businesses up there, which is great. So we are moving in that direction, as are many other communities, but I would support that.
All right. Moving on to Paul Hinterlong?
Thank you. Well, the reason most of them are leaving is because Chicago chose to TIF Chicago. That's the reason. So it's taken a lot of our big businesses away from us. But the good news is, is we're backfilling them. Office Max is now going to be used. It'll be subdivided into many different, like 20 offices within the whole building. It's Class A office space, which we don't have any of that around. So it's premier office space, and it's being leased out. The same thing with our Nokia property. That's a million and a half square feet. We've got that filling up. That's going to be a community within its own building. They're going to have stores in it, spas, health clubs, everything you need, so you don't even have to leave that facility. Right now, we're at an all-time low. We're down to, from about 14% down to 10% in vacancy in our office complexes. So we're at all-time low on our vacancies. So we're filling them up, and we're competing, even though we're competing against the giant with the TIF down in Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Mira?
I agree a lot with what Paul said, because Chicago is the big gorilla in the room, and when it starts throwing its weight around, you're going to get businesses that move there. They've got a much bigger tax base, so they don't have to squeeze everybody for what they've got. What Naperville has going for it is Naperville has wonderful schools. Naperville has a good place to raise your family. We've seen companies that have gone into Chicago in two or three years later because of employee disgruntledness of where they are and what it costs to live down there and things like that, where they have actually reversed course. I don't know if that will happen in this regard, but I'm glad that everything is being backfilled, as Paul said. And perhaps we stopped looking at huge companies and start looking more at the internet-based companies, at the small entrepreneurs, bringing them in so that one leaves, you don't have such a huge impact. Obviously, we'd love to have giant companies here, but when they move out of town, you lose a lot. So diversify. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Teresha Sullivan?
So the Chicago has gained these companies back. But that, we talk about retail going away. Big corporate offices are also going away. A lot of people are working from home. We can work all around the world. We can collaborate with all the technologies we have. So that's another thing that is going to eventually go away. So giving away tax dollars for that is, I think, bad policy. As far as, we've talked a lot today about making Naperville better. And when we do that with public transportation and affordable housing, and we keep our schools well-funded, and we keep our public safety number one in the world, that makes people want to stay here. That makes people want to open businesses here. And there are a lot of virtual workers in Naperville who would want to stay here. So, you know, as far as that question, I don't think bringing big companies to Naperville is going to be a sustainable way to do this, but I think the little companies and selling Naperville, keeping it as great as we have and making it better, will bring the smaller companies in. Thank you.
All right. Next is Patrick Kelly.
So I think this question really relates to your very first question this afternoon. Certainly, the economic pressure from Chicago is important, but finding ways to keep young people in Naperville or to move to Naperville is almost equally important. I think workforce location and workforce availability is hugely important to these companies. And one reason a lot of these big corporations have gone to the West Loop, for example, is because that's where millennials want to live, is in the West Loop. And in certain ways, we can't compete with that. There are certain things in Chicago that 23-year-olds want to have and won't come here for. But again, it's being future and forward-thinking to make sure that they do come here at some point and form that base that companies are going to see as a real commodity to help their businesses grow. So it's, again, sustainability, keeping our technology top of line, keeping the schools great, and making sure this is a great place to not only work, but also live, and have those workspaces be vibrant. Both the old office complexes on 88, but also Fifth Avenue is an example of that, where I, personally, I think office and industrial, and institutional uses are going to be an important component to that Fifth Avenue development. And having really top-notch spaces there will help with that issue.
Thank you. Brad Miller?
So, as was already mentioned, you know, Chicago obviously was able to get some of these companies through big incentives. And, you know, here in Naperville, I think the easiest thing we could do is create a business-friendly environment. We need to make sure we keep our taxes low. We need to have a stable local government with balanced budgets, et cetera. We need to work with our Chamber of Commerce and other groups to attract more businesses to Naperville. We need to be proactive with our regulations to make sure they're not stifling businesses, both here and in the future. And, you know, we all know retail's going away. So we need to diversify our businesses. We need to make sure that we're trying to attract technology and other emerging areas. You know, we have a lot to offer here in Naperville, but it's going to be an ongoing effort to attract businesses. Not going to be easy.
Thank you. Bruce? Bruce Henson?
So one of the great benefits of serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission is the ability to kind of see what a great staff we have and the partnerships that we have to attract and retain businesses here. So the Naperville Development Partnership, for example, is a great organization that is tasked exactly with this. And I think the idea of bringing in multiple smaller businesses, you know, instead of tens of thousands or even thousands of employees, if you get, you know, 100 or up to 500 or 600 employees, it gives us that diversity. So when we have a diverse economic base, that's what employs people, that's what attracts people. But we also have to look at our zoning, and we have to look at things like the live-work-play model, where people want to be closer to everything. They don't want to have to drive everywhere and go everywhere, which I think is a great example of where the Fifth Avenue development can come into play, and the East Ogden Avenue corridor, frankly. So I think the more that we're thinking positively about that dynamic mix and thinking in a future context, the better off that we're going to be as an economy here in Naperville.
Thank you. Michelle Clement?
Thank you. I want to go back to that first question, and part of my answer was to engage our local talent in our local economy. Many people in this room are business owners, and we need to continue to encourage them to stay business owners in our community. We need to work with the Naperville Development Partnership to attract new business to the community as well. We also need to involve the community, our community, in the process. What do our residents want to see near their homes? What are they looking for? As far as the increased amount of residential development, I think we need a healthy mix of residential and commercial development. Having that commercial development will help keep our property taxes as low as possible. And we probably need to look to more experiential businesses rather than the traditional retail strip centers and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Turner?
I think we need some TIF reform with the city governments, the county governments, all working together with the state agencies to, I guess, regulate these TIFs so that we don't end up in all of these wars with one community trying to poach businesses from another community. They're just trading boundaries. And if we all work together, hopefully we could stabilize that. I think one benefit to the departure of some of these places like Nokia and so on, well, I guess not the building, but one benefit is, instead of attracting more of these big box buildings, you know, with large carbon footprints, this thinking smaller, I think, will lead us to a more sustainable path. And also, this does go back to question number one about what do millennials want. I think it's important that we keep that in the forefront of our minds with future city design. Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Robbins?
Yes. So I will echo a lot of what others have already said, but one thing that I find so important is Naperville needs to not be distracted by what Chicago is doing. We do so many things well, not even well. We do them, we're the best. And so we need to continue to retain these businesses that we already have here today. And like in that first question, talking about what millennials want, they do want that live-work-play, and they want it fast. And Naperville has a unique opportunity to actually continue to be best in class, and that is utilizing our dark fiber assets, which a lot of people say, "What is that?" But Naperville does have that. And right now, it's not being utilized. And so when we start to revitalize the Office Max building, like Paul mentioned, which is now the Schuman, or other places even close to 59, we need to look at that and make sure that we're utilizing that fiber. So when our companies are coming in and these millennials are saying, "What do you have to offer?" That is going to make us different in why people want to be here.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next question, which is, "There is always a challenge to manage development while managing resources. With a number of new developments coming to southwest Naperville, such as Wagner Farms, Naperville Crossings, Polo Fields, please give your take on how they will impact the city's resources, such as roadways, sewage, traffic management, and school system?" We've talked about school system a little bit, so we can skip that part. "Would you be in favor of allowing more medium and high-density housing in this area?" The first to answer that would be Patrick Kelly.
The quick answer is not until we get the infrastructure right. So I think there is room for development. I don't think it would be wise to say we should not continue to develop our city. We've got to always advance and move forward. But we shouldn't do it at the expense of the current residents without taking care of problems that exist and without planning for problems that we know will come from these developments. So the Polo Club is an easy example that's on the table right now. And we know 119th Street and Route 59 right now is a terrible problem. It's an F-intersection, and the developer has not come to the table with a plan, in my opinion, that would satisfactorily fix that problem. And we've got to do it right. Now is the opportunity to do it right when you're going to have such a large development. To me, it's really once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and you've got to follow the right processes. You've got to follow the right steps to make sure that's taken care of. It's going to involve working with other municipalities, other governmental agencies. It's not going to be easy, but those are the things that we've got to have the will, as a council, to sit down and do and get right before we move forward.
Thank you. Whitney Robbins?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I think we have to be open. I'm not in favor of putting high to medium density across the board. But when I look at the property, I think it's right behind Potbelly's, I think 95th, that sat vacant for 15 years. They tried 100 different ways to sell that property as a commercial piece of property. It didn't go anywhere. And so the city said, "Okay, what can we do differently?" And so they rezoned it. And that's caused a lot of controversy, but I support that. I think that was the right decision. When I look at Polo Fields, and knowing that I sit on 119th the way that we all do, if you go to soccer games or live over there, we know that we have an infrastructure issue, and we need to solve for that. I don't have all those answers, but there has to be a balance.
Thank you. Brad Miller?
Well, first of all, you know, it's a good problem to have. I mean, other cities would love to have developers wanting to develop in their city. But obviously, when it comes to development, there's a lot of factors. There's a lot of challenges. I feel like I'm in a unique position because I do live in south Naperville, and I'm also a commuter. So development's definitely going to impact me. I don't live too far from the Polo Club proposed development. And as was already mentioned, the biggest issue down there is 119th Street. It's already, you know, in my opinion, a disaster. It needs to be addressed before we add more units, which will obviously add more traffic. When it comes to Fifth Avenue, you know, I'm a parker. I park at the commuter lot, so I think we need to address that as well, traffic, et cetera. These are all factors when it comes to choosing what to develop and how. And I think we need to have a balanced approach as a city.
Thank you. We'll move on to Bruce Henson.
Thank you. Yeah, so one of the biggest challenges, I'll start with Polo Club first. One of the biggest challenges there is that 119th Street, Route 59 intersection. That's in unincorporated Plainfield, and it's not in any way connected to Naperville. So there's no possible way to solve that issue from Naperville's perspective. So there's no possible way to solve that issue from Naperville's perspective. However, if the Polo Club development moves forward and that land is annexed, that does give Naperville the ability to sort of reach into that. And through the developer being requested or being pressed by the Naperville City Council to make some of these off-site improvements, we have the ability to do that. I think what they proposed in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission was very limited in scope, so I think that as a city councilman, I'd like to see a whole lot more movement in resolving that before the development moves forward, with regard to Naperville Crossing and with regard to some of the other developments as well. The hard part is, is what's best for the whole city and what's best for development at the same time. So we have to lean into those a bit and resolve those issues, but I think it's a good use of the space at Naperville Crossings, and we'll see what they come back with. They have to get approval first by Planning and Zoning before it goes to council.
Thank you. Michelle Clemmon?
Thank you. First and foremost, public safety is going to be important with any development. So with the infrastructure and the traffic and the congestion, can our first responders get to where they need to go in the best, in the fastest amount of time when there's an emergency? So that is a non-negotiable for me. Secondly, I think we need to involve the community in the process, and one of the ways in which the city is doing that now is through the Planning and Zoning Commission, having those in the community come and speak, as well as with Fifth Avenue, having the steering committees and the working groups leading up to the development and the process that we're currently in right now. I think that's a great example of our community coming together. I also think that we need to encourage our developers to engage our communities so that we're getting a collaboration of what the city is wanting in these undeveloped spaces or spaces that are being redeveloped to get the best outcome for everyone.
Thank you. Patty Guston?
Thank you. I have friends and families and clients that live on the South Side. I do live far north, but I think these are three different components. Wagner Farms actually had infrastructure that could accommodate the additional growth of the housing. Now, Route 59, we don't own, that's owned by the state, so we have limited things that we can do with that. But that development had infrastructure already developed to accommodate the type of traffic and the increase. The Polo Club, on the other hand, is going to be potentially annexed to the city. The reality is, if it's annexed to the city, we then are responsible for that road and we're responsible for that traffic. So for me, you have to be smart about this, and we are a very smart community. I'm not in favor of the development until we can figure out exactly how we're going to deal with the traffic and the infrastructure on that particular parcel. The Fifth Avenue development, I actually am on the working group, I was on the working group with the residents and the developer for water and traffic, and I have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hintrelong?
Thank you. The first thing we address when we look at all these developments is our public safety units, and they can handle, on a public safety aspect, these new developments. Naperville Crossings, we talk about live-work-play. Adding residential to Naperville Crossings, we have not been able to find anyone on a mentee or a lot, so if that was redeveloped today, brand-new, it would have more of a live-work-play atmosphere of what people want today, so that's why we added that residential component to it. Wagner Farms, we checked with 204, they said they have the capacity for them, no capacity on the north end of their district. And the Polo Club, we talk about diversity for seniors, new families. This project does have that diversity in it. What we're asking for, problem is the infrastructure of the roads and being able to handle those. So we have to work with the developer and the community, surrounding community, to work together and come up with a solution on 119th before we move forward on it. Thank you.
Nancy Turner?
Well, there is not a one-size-fits-all answer. They're all different projects, and each project has its own needs. But I think for every project that comes before city council, the infrastructure needs need to be addressed first. And we all know that per household in Naperville, there's not just one car, there's two cars. In some cases, there are three cars. So adding 500 units to the Polo Club is not, we're not adding just 500 cars to 119th Street. And the other important part of the process is to work in partnership with the school districts so that the schools are not overwhelmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri S. Sullivan?
So, that was a really loaded question. I was going to ask you to say the question again, but I think I know the different components, so I'll just try, okay? So, the, as far as, I agree with what everyone has said here, are the decisions that city council has already made on Wagner Farms and on Naperville Crossing, I agree with. The Polo Club has not been taken up by city council yet. I would not, in its present state, it is not ready for all of the reasons that have already been stated. One thing that you, that I think was in that question, was about medium and high-density. I don't think you can just say, "Yes, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of that," but I do think we need more affordable housing, and I think we have to think to the future, and people want smaller things, people want smaller places, and I'm thinking about how we can look at that for land use in smaller zones for housing and affordable housing, and those things won't look like huge skyscrapers, but instead, smaller units.
Thank you. Barbara Mira?
With the developments we're talking about, and what they have down at the Polo Club with 119th Street, there's no way you can put in that amount of people and expect them to all go out on 119th and go out on 59. You've got a bridge there that you cannot take a bus over, and yet, your high school is over that bridge, so you've got to go whipping around, out to 59 and come back. It's not viable. As Patrick said, it's already an F-intersection. There's no way that this is going to work in its present form. So as it is, I'm against that until the infrastructure is figured out. The second thing is, with all these developments, we have to have a plan for sustainability and our storm runoff. You can't just keep putting more water into our storm sewers. It's not working. So we have to have permeable parking lots. We have to have a place where this water's going to go. We have to have that all planned out before we approve another big project down there at the Polo Clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're, in theory, we were going to do two additional questions that would take us, you know, from a time-limited perspective, but we've got a lot more from our audience. So instead of doing one minute, two questions, I'm going to break it up into three questions, 45 seconds, and 30, 30 seconds. So, it'll be exciting for everybody. Hey, bingo time, right? All right, so here we go. "To get parking at Metro Station is practically impossible." Raising my hand. There are people, there are people waiting for 10 years. What can be done, in your opinion? And what would you do to improve public transportation within the city of Naperville? To make it better, obviously. The first one goes to Barb. Sorry, Barbara Mira?
Parking. This is ridiculous. 20 years ago, I moved here, and the first thing somebody said was, "Order your parking pass now." And I'm like, "I don't, I don't use the train, thank gosh," because I don't want to have to deal with that. This is an ongoing problem that should have been dealt with a long time ago. You have a tremendous amount of opportunity along Ogden, you've got a tremendous amount of opportunity to put off-site parking somewhere and shuttle people back and forth. It would take five minutes. There's no way we're going to put more parking at Fifth Avenue Station. You put up that 10-story condominium, where are those cars going to go? You have to figure out a better idea on that. Nancy has already pointed out, we're still charging the same amount for same-day parking, $2. Let's make that a little bit higher so that we can cover the costs there. Thank you.
Bruce Henson?
Thank you. The parking pass, yeah, that, I think it's $110 or $120 per quarter for a parking pass, if you can get your hands on one, for the downtown parking lots. So I think if you make that more of a market rate, you're going to reduce that waiting list by a substantial amount. It's cheaper to park than it is to take the bus, so I think if we get that, if we reverse the inversion there, I think you'll find more people using public transportation, and the more people who use public transportation, the more resources there are for us to expand that public transportation. So I'd be in favor of investigating both of those.
Thank you. Patty Guston?
Thank you. Well, we all know that Metro can only put so many cabs on its line to get everybody to Union Station. They are talking about modifying their cab design to add more seating for people, so we'll see how that goes. With respect to Fifth Avenue, yes, there's a 12-year waiting list. However, there's no waiting list at Route 59. You can hop on the train at Route 59 and head on into the city. I had, six years ago, talked about and actually did a PowerPoint presentation with respect to a people mover system, kind of like a trolley system or San Francisco Trolley Train. That was something that I proposed and gave to city staff after we did our Fifth Avenue corridor study, because when I was on the Planning Commission, we did the study and we identified that we cannot accommodate all the cars that want to park or use the roads to the train station.
Brad Miller?
So, again, I think I'm in a unique position because I think I'm the only one that actually takes the train every day. I go out of the downtown Naperville train station. I can verify, it took a long time to get that pass, and we obviously do need to do something about commuter parking. I think with the Fifth Avenue development, if we can reconfigure the parking, that would help a lot, because 80% of us go south, including myself, and where I park currently, it's the exact opposite way of where I need to go. So I think if we can reconfigure where the parking goes with regards to the Fifth Avenue development, that would really help a lot with traffic, but we definitely need to address this problem. It's been too long.
Teri S. Sullivan?
When my husband and I first moved to Naperville, we were train commuters every day, and the calisthetics that were involved in trying to pick up the kids from daycare and get home from work, it was insane. So this is near and dear to my heart. Again, I'm going to bring up the technology in smart cities. We can figure out this parking problem if we get rid of these, the permit thing is just over. It's like something from the 70s, and it doesn't work, and people abuse it. We need to do something where we can have an app where people know that they have parking app, and they know exactly where it is. And the way that we can do this is through algorithms, and we can alleviate a lot of the traffic if we say, "This is your spot," and we know what train people are going to take. They can just tell the app what they're going to do. The technology's all out there, and we can make that happen right away. So that's something that we need to fix before we start Fifth Avenue development. Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Robbins?
Yes, thank you. So this is clearly near and dear to my heart because I deal with this every day. I live three doors down from Fifth Avenue, and my kids walk to school down Fifth Avenue and Washington. So I am bumping into everyone that is trying to get to their train. It does not work. I think we all know that it does not work. I do believe there's efficiencies through technologies and infrastructure. The infrastructure is no longer effective. It does not work anymore, and we have to redesign that area for safe-walking paths, bike paths, and for cars and commuters.
Thank you. Michelle Clemmon?
So I agree that something needs to be done with the cost of the parking. If it's cheaper to park than it is to take the bus, we have an upside-down problem with trying to get to and from the train. I think we need to be forward-thinking as well. We're looking at probably, in the next, I would say, five to 10 years, having autonomous driving vehicles. So then, what happens when, if we should add more parking? So we need to be forward-thinking in that manner as well. I also think public transportation is an issue for those that aren't commuters. We need to take a look at our workforce that take the train to Naperville and then need to get around, or those that need to get out and go grocery shopping in the middle of the day, and there's not that transportation available.
Thank you. Nancy Turner?
If we want to encourage the use of more public transportation in Naperville, that's going to require a massive change in behavior. We drive everywhere here, and I think the best way to change people's behavior is through incentives, and the incentives related to parking at the Metro are dollars in convenience. It's way more convenient and much cheaper to drive to the station and park, so we need to reverse, reverse those charges so that it's more convenient and more cost-effective to take public transportation. Thank you.
Paul Hintrelong?
Thank you. The permitting process is a problem. It's that long of a wait because we really haven't scoured through it to find out how many people are actually using the passes, how many aren't. I'm sure there's people that are just holding on to them, letting people use them as they want, and not, or not using them all at all, or just when they go to a Cubs game, they use it. We've got to figure out who's using them, who's not. We've got to find out how many people are on the list just to get a better spot somewhere else in a different lot. And really, the biggest problem is we have a car dependence in this community that we can't get away from because our busing system is more than what it costs to park, and we have to reverse that, take a look at it. We have not increased that parking fee in probably 15 years, so the time is due to check this out and get it done right. Thank you.
Patrick Kelly?
Yeah, I'm a member of the steering committee on this Fifth Avenue project, and as part of that role, I stood at the podium last fall, and one of my arguments to council is that we should not move forward on that project until we have a solution on the commuter parking issue. It's a fundamental part of that entire project that we've got to know upfront, and one thing that I think is really important is working with full information, and we don't have it still. After a year and a half of that process, we still don't know exactly who really parks there. There's open spaces if you drive by in the morning. Passes get turned over to people at real estate closings, they slide across the table, so the list is really artificial. We've got to really direct staff to really get a handle on it and to propose solutions. How can we do this differently? What are alternatives? And once we do that, then we figure out how many parking spaces we really need and how they ought to work within that development.
Thank you. So now, we'll go into our rapid-fire round. "With the city's financial position better than what it was four years ago, how would you balance building our reserves versus further paying down our debt? Would you be in favor of raising any more taxes?" And the first question goes to Michelle Clemmon.
So, no, I'm not in favor of increasing taxes or fees. We need to take a look at keeping Naperville affordable for those that are here and want to be here. Our senior population has felt it the most, those that have fixed incomes have felt it the most. So I'm not in favor of increasing taxes. I think we do need to take a look at how we can increase our reserves and reduce our debt, though, in the way that we've been doing. Thank you.
Nancy Turner?
I don't think that it's necessary at this point to raise any of our taxes, and as long as the economy permits, Naperville should continue its focus on reducing its debt and increasing its cash reserves so that we have a cushion, and when and if the time comes that we are faced with more economic difficulties, we'll be able to weather them better. Thank you.
Whitney Robbins?
Yes, I would say, in the last four years, we've done a phenomenal job of paying down that debt and paying attention to filling up that economic development bucket. I am not in favor of raising property taxes, and I truly believe if we can stay in front of our economic development, that will answer a lot of these questions.
Barbara Mira?
I'm also on the bandwagon of not raising taxes. Well, I think you're going to be hard-pressed to find somebody that is. And so, we need to obviously have a plan to reduce our debt, and again, I would like to be running on a stand that, you know, the mayor and the city council has done a terrible financial job, but they haven't. They've got a plan to reduce the debt. They've been increasing their reserves. We need to stay the course on what they've already set out. You don't want to go in and rework that from where it is at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Miller?
I think it's clear that over the last four years, the city's finances are better off than they were. I am absolutely against raising taxes, and I do think we need to focus on paying off any high interest debt we may have and also putting more money into reserves.
Bruce Henson?
One of the best parts about paying down the debt now is, while the city's in a financial position to do that, it gives us potential for capacity later if we need, if we need that as a place. Same thing with our financial reserves, so I agree with staying the course on that. The last place I'm going to look for revenue is going to be a property tax. I think we need to continue our push for economic development because when we have diverse pockets of, and different streams of revenue, that's what allows us to weather these different types of storms. I think one creative way that we need to be looking at revenue is to go after the Main Street Fairness Act, which is an act that allows us to collect local sales tax on online purchases as opposed to just having those dollars go to Springfield.
Thank you. Patrick Kelly?
Yes, I would not be in favor of raising taxes. I don't think any of us are. In terms of paying down debt versus increasing our cash reserves, it's another question where I think we've just got to do our homework. It's not that easy to say without really looking through that data. Paying down debt is especially good if it reduces those debt payments and frees up additional money to pay cash reserves. That's great. If we can do both, great. It's more likely going to be a choice, one or the other. I would potentially lean towards increasing those cash reserves because I do think there's a serious risk. a serious risk of having some degree of a recession at some point. We've got to be prepared so we don't have to raise taxes then.
Thank you. Patty Guston?
Thank you. When I got on the dais with the other council members, we had a $6 million deficit. And we had to figure out a way in which to handle that. And we were the first city council to institute the financial principles. One is to increase the reserve amount by 25% within the next eight years. We are in advance of that. We're at 23% now. Twenty-five percent reduction in our debt, that's important because when we borrow money, we need to make sure we retain our AAA bond rating, otherwise it's going to cost the city a lot of money, and keep our city services, the quality of our city services. So we've already moved forward with respect to that and I'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And Teri S. Sullivan?
I believe the property taxes are the last place that we want to raise money. And as far as the balance between the reserves and debt, I think the city council has done a great job in the past four years. I think we need to continue to have structurally balanced budgets. And I think that, you know, we both raise our reserves and lower our debt, but we don't take out more debt. So even though we're paying down debt, I don't think we should be taking out more. So I keep an eye on that.
Thank you. And, you know, make what you may of this last question. What is your stance on Naperville's minimum wage ordinance? And we will, and this is thirty seconds, we'll start with Brad Miller.
I'll roll.
Oh, did I miss Paul? Okay. I'm sorry, I marked it as I already asked. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Paul.
That's all right. Thank you. Yeah, we need to stay the course in our financial principles. Right now, we're at 23.7% on our reserves, which is about $28 million we've increased our reserves with. Our debt, 20.9%, we've already reduced those, about $25 million. Through efficiencies, we're able not to raise taxes. It's the last thing we all want to do is raise taxes. We maintain a AAA bond rating, have for the last 23 years. It's our lowest tax rate in 50 years and our lowest employees per thousand residents in 50 years, too. And it's also enabled us to lower your property tax 15% over the last four years. So what we have in line is working very well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for that, Paul. All right. So I'll repeat the question again, it's a thirty-second question. What is your stance on Naperville's minimum wage ordinance? And we will start with Brad Miller.
I think when we're talking about minimum wage statewide or locally, I think we need to take small steps as opposed to big steps. Because obviously, it's going to impact a lot of small businesses. It's also going to impact our schools. You know, the schools have a lot of people that work around that wage level. And obviously, if they have to pay them more, the money has to come from somewhere, which will obviously be our property taxes. So I think we have to be very careful and we have to take small steps, not big steps.
Thank you. Patty Guston?
Exactly what Brad said.
All right.
Yeah, we have to be careful about that. You know, our school taxes are high already. And that's because we do a wonderful job in the education of our children. But with the minimum wage also comes that additional burden to the school district. And that, again, is going to affect the real estate taxes. Thank you.
Michelle Clement?
I agree with what Bradford and Patty have said as well. This is going to hurt our school districts. It will hurt our small businesses. We may lose jobs because of it, because we'll find more technologically creative ways to get around that minimum wage requirement.
Patrick Kelly?
So I think it really is a state issue. You know, the state bill was passed. It's now state law and it is going to be an increase over, I think, five years. So the municipal question, I don't think there really is one. We've got to follow state law. And I think for what it's worth, there is some real benefit to it. I think people who do work full-time should earn a living wage. There are some protections built in that I think were really good to the state law. There will be tax credits for small businesses under a certain number of employees that will help ease that burden on Naperville small businesses. And people under the age of eighteen are going to have a reduced wage than the typical minimum, which will help. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Hansen?
One of the challenges to jumping the minimum wage too quickly is that you end up putting a huge burden on some of the most vulnerable parts of the population. That would be nonprofit organizations, even our city budget and our schools. So I am definitely going to be watching this very carefully, especially when it comes to anything that's going to touch our property tax bill.
Thank you. Nancy Turner?
Well, it will be a gradual increase. It will be $15 in 2025, so that does give employers in Naperville time to plan and adjust. I think ultimately, it will benefit Naperville in that there will be more dollars spent in Naperville and small businesses especially. I hope we'll see lower turnover. Thank you.
Teri S. Sullivan?
I have to agree with Nancy and Pat on this. I think a lot of the times we look at minimum wage, the state law, and say, oh, we think about the businesses. My focus has always been on the residents. And I think it's a great thing that we're going to have more, people are going to be making a living wage so they can go, they can afford to shop in Naperville and they can afford to dine in Naperville. So, you know, it's state law, we'll follow the state law, and I think it's going to be a good thing.
Thank you. Barbara Mira?
I am all for the increase of the minimum wage because minimum wage has been stagnated and the people at the lowest end of our economy cannot afford to live in Naperville. And yet, we've allowed the CEOs to increase their salaries and their take-home, and yet we have stagnated down here at $8 an hour. People can't afford to live on that. That's below a livable wage. So I am for increasing the minimum wage. I believe that we have lost stock, lost step in trying to keep up with where this should have gone. Historically, this should have been moved forward so that we weren't facing this large of an increase. But as Patrick said, state law now and we're going to have to abide by it.
Thank you. Whitney Robbins?
Yes. So I think this is something that we all have to be pretty dialed into. It's easy for me to say, yes, I agree, they should increase the minimum wage. But I do also see the reality of some of these businesses who are not going to be able to employ all of the employees that they have. We've seen it across the board. McDonald's, Amazon, they're all going to automation. I go into a hotel, I don't even see a human. I check in through my phone. So there is going to be an impact and we just need to pay attention to it.
Paul Hinterlong?
Thank you. It is a state issue and we have to tread lightly, take small steps in trying to address it. And the last thing we want to do is force any more burden on the taxpayers through the school districts having to pay extra and increasing the tax bills. But we also have to find out the ramifications and be able to react to the ramifications that it does put on our businesses here in town. We don't want to lose any businesses because they can't afford the employees that they have now. So we don't want to lose anybody. So we need to take a close eye, keep a close eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a few more questions, but we are not going to go through those. We are out of time for today. So we'll start off with closing statements from our candidates. Let's start with Paul Hinterlong. And this is going to be one minute long.
Thank you to the moderators and ICL for putting on this forum and the residents here watching from home. And thank you all to the candidates that decided to throw their head in the ring. Naperville's been home for me and my family for eight generations. I'm proud of the quality of life we have in Naperville and want to ensure that it continues for your family. I'm ready to serve as your councilman and help guide our community through the complex and diverse challenges that lie ahead. What sets me apart from the other candidates is I have more experience than any other candidate in the race. In 2015, we adopted principles that would reduce our debt by 25% and increase our reserves by 25% by 2023. We have a AAA bond rating for the last 23 years, the lowest tax rate in the last 50 years. I pledge to strive for greater excellence moving forward and will work every day to make Naperville an even greater and better place to live and raise a family. I'm the only candidate with all four endorsements of the Chamber, NACPAC, Fraternal Order of Police, Professional Firefighters, and the Daily Herald. I'm third on the ballot and ask for your support on April 2nd. My website is volhinterlong.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Clement?
Thank you to the IOC for hosting and to our moderators. Thank you for all being here, those watching at home and around the world. I appreciate the time that you've given us today. I decided to run for city council back in November after this last election. There was a statement made, it seemed, that we needed a new and fresh voice in our government. I want to be that fresh voice for you. I have been in the community for 15 years. I've been involved on not-for-profit boards as well as on the city's Housing Advisory Commission, which gives me a unique opportunity with the developments coming forward to address our affordable housing needs. I love this community and I want to continue to give back to the community that welcomed me 15 years ago. I'm number five on the ballot and I'm asking for your vote on April 2nd.
Thank you. Patrick Kelly?
Thank you. Thank you to ICL for hosting us and for everyone who came out to watch and is watching on TV. Really appreciate it. And I think you've heard tonight, or this afternoon, that there are really a lot more similarities than disagreements with a lot of the candidates. A lot of the big issues, you hear some similar answers. And I think a question is, who should be on council and who has the skills, the background, the experience, the knowledge, and the commitment to do it? And I think I've exhibited that I have. I've got the work experience. I own my own business in downtown Naperville. I've been committed to the community through nonprofit work, through the steering committee for the Fifth Avenue project. And I've worked really hard at this campaign to prepare myself to make sure that I would be an effective council member on day one. I've met with all the department heads of the city departments. I've been endorsed by the Daily Herald and by the Naperville Firefighters Union. And I would appreciate and ask for your vote. I'm number four on the ballot and thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy Turner?
I'm committed to working hard on city council in a collaborative fashion. I've done that through my whole career as an educator. I'm very capable. I have two advanced degrees, one in a master's in Latin and an MBA. And I care deeply about Naperville's future. If elected, I will propose expanding our city's vision and mission statement to include making Naperville more sustainable and more inclusive in addition to being the number-one destination for business. My name is Nancy Turner and I hope to earn your vote on April 2nd. And thank you, everyone, for your attention today.
Thank you. Patty Guston?
Thank you, ISO, for hosting this event this afternoon. We are so blessed to have so many candidates that want to give of their time and serve. I will support smart development that improves our financial balance and retains the character of our community because that is why families move here. We already are working on DART fiber options through the city. And we also, a couple of years ago, I actually was the individual who stepped forward to say we needed a parking app. And we have been working with local businesses to identify how we can get a parking app for them or they can get a parking app for themselves. I will continue to keep Naperville a safe community. I am proud to have received the Naperville Fireman's endorsement. My care is evidenced by the passing of the T-21 bill limiting those gateway drugs that lead our youth to opioid and other drug abuse, supportive initiatives that help our kids make healthy choices. I will continue to support our seniors by actions, not just words, with Gab, with Guston, and other events that I attend. And I will continue to be the liaison for the Naperville Sister City Commission, providing blended cultures. Four years ago, I promised to eliminate health benefits and pensions. Done. I promised transparency. Our website and IT have progressed leaps and bounds. I promise to repair the budget. We've done it. So on April 2nd, please vote for Patty Guston. Remember, you can trust a Guston! Sorry!
Teri S. Sullivan?
Thanks again for coming this afternoon. I've been out knocking on doors and asking Naperville residents to trust me with the important decisions of the city that we all love. And I have been really fortunate to meet such interesting and earnest and active residents and people who always go out and vote and who want to make great decisions for our city. My goal is to serve on city council the way I show up in real life, with accountability, with integrity, and with humility. I'm straightforward, data-driven, socially conscious. I look at the residents of Naperville as advisors who can help the council determine what's best for our city. And I want and welcome your feedback. If anybody has further questions for me, my website is sullivanfornaperville.org. Facebook page is Sullivan for Naperville City Council. And I have weekly video conferences where I ask people to come and ask questions and you can ask me directly. Thanks for making our city great and I hope I'm one of the four people here who's earned your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Robbins?
Yes, thank you again. Thank you all for coming out and spending your afternoon on Saturday with us. I am Whitney Robbins. Like I mentioned earlier, I love Naperville. I grew up here. I am raising my kids. I am just like everybody else in the community who is actively involved in utilizing this community. I think I bring an interesting perspective to the table that is not currently there on council. Because of my 20-plus years in the telecom industry and corporate America, it differentiates me because I also am a mom with three little kids and I have two aging parents in this community. I have a vested interest, I have a vested interest in all of you. And on April 2nd, I would be honored to have your vote. I am number eight on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Hansen?
I'm grateful to all of you today, grateful to ICL for putting this on. Thank you for spending time with us. I'm also grateful for the honor to have served residents of Naperville for these past 16 years. I'm grateful for, I love this city and I love the work that I've been asked to do so far. And I want to continue to take that next step and serve in Naperville City Council. I believe strongly in building on our commonalities and not dividing on our differences. And if elected, I'm going to continue my focus on the right steps to keep city costs low, make sure that we have a diverse base of revenue to keep property taxes low. I'm going to work to address diverse housing and commercial options that add vibrancy to our city while being respectful of the neighborhoods and sense of community around them so that we can protect our schools, parks, and keep Naperville the amazing city it is to live. I will also be an advocate for mental health awareness and public safety for all residents and for first responders. My wife, Amanda, and I have lived here since 2000, or since before 2000, and we raised our children here and we love Naperville. I'm the only non-incumbent to receive both the Daily Herald and the NACPAC endorsement. I'm number six on the ballot. I'm Bruce Hansen, hansenfornaperville.com, and I ask for your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Mira?
Thank you for sponsoring this and for everyone that's come and everybody that's been watching this and the people that have now come to two or three or four of these forums. Thank you for spending your time and listening to us. It's amazing that Naperville again has a first-world problem here where you've got 10 very able, qualified people that want to represent you. And that makes it a difficult thing sometimes. But I've got to tell you, in working and being up here with all these people, they all want to do what they think is right for Naperville. And that is a great thing. I bring a unique perspective. I've got a science background. I've worked for the government for close to 30 years. And I want to make sure that Naperville goes forward being sustainable, ecologically conscious, and that we have a plan before we do these types of developments out there, that we know what's happening with the infrastructure, with the stormwater. Things happen. Environmental hazards are out there and there's no reason for something like steragistics to ever happen here in Naperville. And that's the science background that I bring. I'm number nine on the ballot. My name is Barbara O'Mera. Go ahead and vote for me, April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Miller?
Thank you again to the ICL for hosting this forum today. My name is Bradford Miller. I'm a first-time candidate for Naperville City Council. I'm a first-time candidate for Naperville City Council. My family moved to Naperville because it's a great city. And we have a AAA bond rating. We keep our taxes as low as possible. We keep our spending in check. And I'm running to make sure we stay in that direction. You know, things are not perfect. We know there's significant challenges lying ahead. We have traffic issues. We have big developments on the horizon. We have a growing opioid crisis in our community. But I'm ready to tackle those challenges. I'm ready to fight to keep Naperville the best place to raise a family. I'm a small business owner. I know how to make hard decisions. I know how to balance budgets. I know how to have a plan for the future. I know how to lead. I was just recently endorsed by NACPAC as a first-time candidate, so I'm very proud of that. My name is Bradford Miller. I'm running for city council. I'm number one on the ballot. I'm asking for your vote. My website is millerfornaperville.com. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I think that brings an end to the question and answer and closing statements part. I'll hand it back to Krishna to summarize the end.
Well, first of all, thank you, all the candidates. Can we have a big round of applause? These, Naperville is great because of these people. I mean, when people step up and really come up to go up and beyond to help Naperville. So thank you. Thank you for what you do. It's not easy to run, first of all. It takes a lot to commit your time to run a campaign. I have done it. I know how it is. It is a difficult task. You all are doing it. So hats off for you. I mean, elections are elections, but you all are, you have already set an example. So we all look forward. I mean, these were, I hope, the questions were a little different. We tried giving a little tangent. I mean, rather than the other forums, we had many questions that we got from the radio listeners. They sent it to us. Desi Junction has been supporting, TV Asia. They have been, this will be played again and again on multiple social media platforms as well as the radio stations and the TV stations so that we can reach to maximum Naperville residents. And we hope that they will come out and vote. We got a very good perspective. There were similarities, there were differences. So hats off. Thank you again. I'd like to also thank our moderators, Viral Shah and Vandana Jhingan. Viral Shah, let's get a big round of applause. I know Vandana got a little cold, so Viral took it very nicely. Thank you, Viral, for taking it over and running it right on time. I mean, we are right on time, 3 o'clock. So I know we rushed a little bit, but I think we still were able to get a good set of answers. And also Gotham Grover kept us on time with all the 15 seconds and the red signs. So thank you. And thank you, everyone else, for coming out today. This has been a great thing. We hope that you will be able to make a better decision based on the answers you have heard. And with this, we'll sign off and we will be again back with something new in the near short future. And we'd like to just get some pictures if you're with everyone. And with this, let's sign off. Thank you.